We're interested in hearing about this. Let us know and we'll come out. And I actually go out a lot of times personally to have those conversations. So we do, we already have the road show. We actually even have the poster session that we do for the schools and it travels around the schools. So a lot of that stuff is out there. We're ready to do it. Um, I will tell you that we've had, um, we haven't had as much success because they'll have a community who will ask us to come out and we'll come out and four people to show up. So, you know, I still perform. I still give them all the information. Um, sometimes I even sing. Um, but, you know, I don't have that many people out there, you know, who are, you know, who are, who are trying to engage. So if you have a group, let us know and then we'll be there.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Branch.
Okay.
Any other, um, questions or comments?
I, I guess I want to, uh, uh, concur with my colleague, Councilman Crandall, that, uh, this work is very important. We appreciate all your efforts. We stand ready to help you because this here is saving lives and saving families. So anything we could do to help.
Yeah, and, and I echo that as well. And, you know, a comment from Councilman Crandall definitely, we were talking about this at lunch today. And the safe zones and having different areas around the county. Uh, it sounds like we have several with the Department of Health and Human Services around the county now. And then we can designate certain, maybe it's a police precinct or if it's a fire station or, you know, and, and how effective would that be to help battle this issue because clearly it's a tough one. So we do appreciate your work. Every time you're here, it really brings home like what local government's doing along with the state to battle some of this issue. So thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Dr. Branch. Okay, moving forward, if, uh, we could call up Ms. Joanne Williams, Director of Department of Aging for the County Council. We could turn to page thirteen, fiscal matter one. Page thirteen. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the council. Uh, we're starting with, uh, the legal aid contract. Is that correct?
Yep, Legal Aid Bureau.
The Department of Aging is requesting the approval of a contract in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars with the Legal Aid Bureau. This contract was selected as a result of a response to a request for proposal. The Senior Legal Assistance Contract provides legal services to Baltimore County residents sixty years of age and older in accordance with the Older Americans Act as amended. Examples of priority services provided include social security, income benefits, counseling, Medicare, Medicaid, long-term care, food stamps, medical and housing assistance. We expect to serve, uh, three hundred and eight clients in fiscal year seventeen and approximately three hundred and twenty clients in fiscal year eighteen.
Questions or comments from the council for Director Williams? Okay, let's move on to fiscal matter two, which is, uh, on page seventeen, fiscal matter two.
Okay, the Islamic Society?
Stella Maris.
I'm sorry. The Baltimore County Department of Aging, under the authority of the Maryland Department of Aging, requests approval of a contract with Stella Maris, uh, doing business at Saint Elizabeth's Hall to provide eating together, congregate meals for participants aged sixty years of age or older, spouses of any age, or disabled persons under the age of sixty who reside with and accompany an older individual. The total contract shall not exceed ten thousand dollars per year. Uh, the, the Department of Aging expects to serve approximately twenty-five hundred meals in fiscal year twenty-eighteen. The original contract effective from October first, twenty-seventeen through September thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, and may be extended for four one-year periods upon the same terms and conditions.
Questions or comments from the council? Okay, why don't we do page twenty, fiscal matter three? That's the Islamic Society of Baltimore.
Thank you. The Department of Aging requests approval of a contract not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars per annum with the Islamic Society of Baltimore to provide site-prepared eating-together congregate meals at the center. The Islamic Society of Baltimore will hire a contractor to prepare and serve all meals. The Islamic Society of Baltimore will provide supervisory personnel while meals are served and facilitate other aspects of the program such as scheduling, recruiting volunteers and registering participants. And those participants must be at least sixty years of age, a spouse of any age, or disabled persons under the age of sixty who reside with and accompany an older individual. And this contract is also from October first, twenty-seventeen through September thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, with the option to renew for four additional one-year renewal terms.
And, uh, these eating-together programs, they're all federal funds through the Department of Health and Human Services? So it's no county dollars? It's all federal flow-through money?
It's through the Older Americans Act money. Yes, federal money.
Any questions or comments from the council? All righty, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's, uh, call up Mr. Keith Dorsey, Director of Office of Budget and Finance. The council could turn to page twenty-three, fiscal matter four. Page twenty-three.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the county council. The fiscal matter four is a request for approval of on-call contract for electrical services. This contract is actually part of a, a group of three that, um, that was going to come forward. You voted on at the September fifth meeting, the contracts for, um, Action Electric and Crown Electric Companies. Uh, this is for the three vendors to serve as one-call for, uh, electrical services for a, up to, uh, it's one year with four one-year renewal and the possibility of a, uh, one-hundred-day extension on any of one of those renewal periods. The total for all three combined is, was not to exceed four million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Questions or comments from the council? All righty, why don't we do fiscal matter five, which is on page twenty-six, fiscal matter five?
Fiscal matter five is a request for approval of a, uh, preventive maintenance contract with HAVTEC Services Division LLC. It is, uh, for providing for, uh, HVAC, uh, preventive maintenance, uh, services at primarily at the, uh, Animal Services, uh, Facility and the West Side Men's Shelter. Uh, the, uh, request is for an amount not to exceed eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five twenty-four for a entire five-year period where it would be one year with four, um, automatic one-year renewals and the possibility of a four-year extension on any one of those periods of time.
And those are what, twenty units in total? Is that right?
Twenty u-
Thirteen and then seven?
I'm not sure what you mean by twenty units.
Just the, uh, HVAC equipment located at County's Animal Services?
Yes, those, yes.
Yeah. Councilman?
Um, Mr. Dorsey, I just have a question. Since the animal shelter, um, the new animal shelter is listed here, um, isn't that air conditioning already under warranty?
It was under war- It was under warranty for one year. Uh, the one year is, um, is run, is running out. And then just like the men's, uh, facility was under warranty for two years and that one's coming to an end of its warranty period.
That's not a very long time.
Long period.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if that could have been negotiated a little bit better when the building was built and the air conditioning was put in. One year's usually not when you have problems. You would agree?
If there, if there were questions that came, I believe, from the auditors, if you want me to proceed to those?
Yeah, that would be great. Yes, please.
If there was a que- there was a question about the, um, uh, the cost and, and so forth. The, the question initially was that, um, for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, estimated cost for these two facilities alone, uh, totaled one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And it represents sixteen point seven percent of the total seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, sixty-nine line item for all county facilities. Uh, I just want to first of all, point out that that seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar number is not really for HVAC coverage. I mean, it's the Siemens, um, contract is underneath for that. Most of that's for other kinds of services. But the premise of the questions were, they wanted the discussion about the new technology that this, uh, represents. Um, it, yes, it is, uh, new and part of the issue. Right now, for all of the other county buildings, except for the few that are underneath for Siemens, uh, we have county staff maintaining those facilities. There's about eleven of them, um, who are HVAC employees. They, uh, the problem is that they don't have the skill set that would be needed to maintain these, um, these newer, these two new facilities in terms of the, the, the type of equipment being put in. It's, um, highly specific, uh, certifications are required, um, that are there. And so, um, yes, it's, it's, it's different than the rest of the county. As to whether, you know, it is, how it will be for each building, each building will differ as we move forward. But it is sort of like the flow of change of, of things. Uh, sort of mimicking what, uh, I notice I can't get the, uh, a forty-dollar tire anymore because they got computer stuff inside the tires. It's that sort of thing, that the new HVAC equipment that is part of the national movement for greater efficiency, along with that efficiencies and their cost savings related to that efficiency. There is the higher cost in terms of maintenance.
Councilman Marks and Councilwoman Beavens?
We're, we're finishing up air conditioning on all of our public schools. Do you know the warranty periods on those units so short?
I don't know what the warranty periods on those are. Those, um, and, and some of those were being done through, um, their regular construction projects. And some of them were being done through performance contracts. And so those performance contracts are likely ones that would have been using some of this higher-tech equipment. I don't know what the warranty is on them. I could, you know, maybe able to find out, but I don't know.
I think that would be good to know. Thank you.
Councilwoman Beavens?
So I, I just want to make sure that I understand this. Uh, maybe I'm not doing the math right, but it's not to exceed eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand hours for just these two buildings? The animal shelter and the men's shelter, right?
For the fourth, for the five-year period of time.
For five, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year on brand-new air conditioning. What is gonna happen with brand-new air conditioning? What is the maintenance of brand-new air conditioning?
Well, I think, I think it's not to exceed eight sixty-nine. So it's, I guess one of the questions would be, how often do these anticipate to be broke, broke down? Because if we're just taking eight sixty-nine divided by the five-year and four-month term, that's like, what, thirteen thousand, five hundred or something per month?
I think that in terms of the numbers that, um, that the auditors have there that may have been provided by my staff, it looks like at least the first year it's at around a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And then it would have been additional, um, inflationary costs added in. But it's the, uh, the monthly maintenance as well as, you know, if there is repairs that are needed on that equipment.
See, I mean, I, I, I think what you're hearing from all of us, pretty, we've, we see lots and lots of contracts come through here all the time. And most of the time they're very perfunctory, very administrative. This one just stands out to us feeling like it's really, really expensive to, to, and, and you know, the thing, my issue with it, it's, um, it's a sole-source procurement requirement, which is non-competitive. So that's something that's sort of, from a taxpayer standpoint, I think does rub a lot of the, sort of, the, the wrong way, which is trying to understand a little better.
Yeah, I, I understand that and because it's the, that is the nature of the, what's happening in the HVAC, um, industry, that they're getting very proprietary in terms of what they, what happens is that you would have a building and they're going to insist, okay, we're gonna put in, um, trained, um, air conditioning and only Siemens can work it. And so that is how it is becoming very, very much, um, yes, individualized. We saw the same sort of thing happening in terms of the computer industry where when you got a new computer and it was IBM and you could only go to IBM and, and to some extent, that's what's happening here in terms of the HVAC, uh, industry.
From, from your experience, say if we're putting out this contract, we're saying, okay, eight sixty-nine over five years and four months, generally from a, your experience looking at a lot of these contracts that flow through, usually by that term, the expiration of the term, the five years, four months, have they basically exhausted most of this funding that we've allocated toward it? Or do we often have two, three hundred thousand left that they've never used or?
For most of the ones you, you've seen that I brought through, most of them, they will have a large portion of the money.
Used, spent?
They usually hit the high end in terms of putting in the amount that they're requesting. Uh, but it's certainly, I, I hear what you're saying and, and it hit me the same way. I, I wanna look at it more. I know we have to put it in place for now, but it's a real question about what can be done in terms of, uh, opportunities for others for certification and what, you know, so that we would, I, I don't like the idea, as you, you sort of imply, we, we're sort of held hostage. I don't like that idea. I think we, we can work on it, but right now we need this, to have it in place.
Councilman Jones?
Yeah, can we see the contract?
Yeah, Mr. Do- uh, Mr. Dorsey, I, I guess for me, I was listening and, uh, I realize a lot of things have changed, but I guess the basic premise of all air conditionings and HVAC systems still work the same. You know, you have a compressor, you have a controller, you have a A-coils, yeah. I mean, you have some little electronics around the end. I guess my question would be, did we ever consider, like, how much money would it cost for our people to get the additional training for the new system? And then the second part is, if it's not under warranty, what difference does it make who we have work on it?
Well, in terms of, in terms of if you break the equipment, there, there's a concern there. You, if you have the air conditioning goes out, what we're trying to do is make sure that it doesn't go out. And if it does, that you have a fa- fast response. What I said a moment ago is sort of in line with what you were just asking. The question is, is it possible for our people at some point to become certified? And this is where we always look at those kind of things. And so that's an area I want to explore. I'm just saying for right now, I sort of need this in place. And then we'll see what we can do in terms of what are the rules of the game to be able to get other people certified. It may be other options that are out there. I don't know, but I, I sort of need this one in place.
Get a couple more Baltimore County employees on the full-time payroll and I'd save us a fair amount of money.
Sounds like we already have them.
Councilman Katz?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for commercial systems as these are, uh, are there service contracts available similar to the ones? I mean, we have it on our HVAC system at home. Are there service contracts, uh, available? And if so, how much are they a year?
Well, that's, this is the point in terms of, someone raised the point, it was a sole source.
Right.
It's because the manufacturer only certifies that certain people can work on the equipment. So other, while there are other service, uh, businesses out there, they're not, um, allowed to work on it. They wouldn't, they have to be certified by the manufacturer in terms of who they will allow. We've experienced this in other areas where sometimes they will certify multiple, um, service companies. And that's where we can compete. Uh, other times they will certify one and only, the one and only company, as the only ones who can touch their equipment. And so, um, that's where we are with this.
With, uh, okay, you're, you're stating that they decide who can touch their systems and, and who can't?
Yeah, to be certified.
If, if it, uh, breaks the system and we've had people working on it that are certified, what's the advantage? Is, is there a warranty in here or, or what, what's going on?
Well, this is, we're saying in terms of the, the first, for one building, it's been one year. The other has been two, where they were willing to come out and provide service for maintaining the, the, the equipment. We're now at a point from, moving forward from here where we have to provide the coverage. And our staff is not qualified, um, or certified to handle this equipment.
Now, my, my question is, if someone who isn't certified to service this equipment, we bring that person in, let's say the system breaks, shuts down, uh, or somebody who is certified takes care of it, the system breaks, shuts down, is the company that manufactured the system on the hook at all under either circumstance?
In, in terms of the, the, the manufacturer, when it was installed, there was a, a period, I guess, of warranty that was an initial one for maintenance. What I'm saying is that period is, is now up. We have to look at someone being able to come in and, and maintain it. And with this contract, if it breaks down, there are time, time limits for them to report and respond and provide the initial, the unnecessary repairs to the system, um, in terms of if it was, if there are parts that have to be repaired. All of that's underneath for the contract. But what I'm saying is that in terms of right now, we do not have a means for caring for these buildings after, um, you know, a certain point of time when the warranty wears, runs out. And so what we're looking for is how to best do that. And right now, we're recommending that the best way of approaching it is that we provide, we obtain a service contract with, with a company that's been certified and qualified to do it and that we do take a longer-term look at what to do, you know, in the future.
Is this the only company then that's certified?
This is the only one that we're aware of in terms of, that's why they receive the sole-source, um, uh, recommendation in terms of this is the one that's available by this manufacturer to be able to do the work.
And they're located in Columbia? They're located in Columbia?
I definitely think it's a, yeah, it's a free market out there. So there's probably some, um, business person looking at, hopefully going into his business, make a little more mo- you know, competition and, you know, feels like a little bit of monopoly, uh, pricing going on. Um, saying that, if, if it's a five-year contract, which automatically renews for, you know, four of the five point four, um, what about if we just did for a year to see if we could maybe develop an in-house instead of committing for five point four years? Is that, is that possible?
Well, it wouldn't make a difference in terms of at any point, there is the ability to, you know, not roll over any one of those years, you know, it's, you know, so.
Right, so it's automatically null unless we say no?
Right.
Okay.
In terms of, we have the option of, of, that's why there's that one hundred and twenty-day, um, period there that if we got to the end of a period and said, oh, we don't want to enter in for another year, let's start moving to find a replacement. That's what the hundred and twenty days is there, so that we'll keep it in place just long enough for us to find a replacement.
Maybe, well, I surely don't want the West Side Shelter to go without HVAC. So I definitely can understand the administration's concern and, of course, the, uh, Animal Services as well. We don't want that to go without, uh, HVAC. But at the same time, you know, we vote, I don't know, hundreds and not thousands of contracts. And, um, yeah, this one seems a little off, so I think we all recognize, yeah. Any other questions, comments for anybody? Everybody good? All right, Mr. Dorsey, thank, we really appreciate your help. Thank you, sir. All righty, uh, why don't we call up Ms. Amy Grassi? And if the council wants to turn to page twenty-nine, fiscal matter six, sanitary relief sewer. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of, um, a contract to acquire property for a, um, twelve-inch sanitary sewer relief project, uh, along Falls Road under the Jones Falls. Um, this particular property is at sixty-five-ten Falls Road, um, which is, um, basically the intersection with Copper Mine Terrace. Uh, it appraised at ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. But, uh, that was just an appraisal of the real estate. Uh, there is a historic retaining wall that needs to be dismantled and rebuilt after the construction of the sanitary sewer. That work costs about fourteen thousand dollars. And there was also some tree removal, um, that was estimated to be worth about a, a thousand dollars. So the total of the contract that was negotiated, um, is twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Um, and, uh, this will be part of a, um, three hundred and thirty-foot, um, twelve-inch sanitary sewer relief project.
Questions or comments from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's right, that's right. All righty, uh, next if we could turn to page thirty-two, call up, well, Anderson, Director, Department of Economic and Workforce Development. Good afternoon. How are you today?
Great. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The Baltimore County Department of Economic Workforce Development is asking support of this resolution, which is, uh, to support the request of a two-million-dollar conditional loan from Maryland Department of Commerce to support a conditional loan through their MEEDAF program, the Economic Development Assistance Authority Fund. Uh, the county will also match a two-hundred-thousand-dollar conditional loan as a part of that program. And this is to support, this is really a proactive measure by the county to try to help, uh, TradePoint Atlantic land a deal with Amazon. And we believe Amazon is a, uh, interested in the site and the site has, uh, a, a lot of attractive qualities to it. And by doing this, the county can help, uh, show its support and its aggressive, uh, action to try and help make a deal happen, which ultimately could bring fifteen hundred jobs just in that Amazon facility. And we've seen in the city, uh, Amazon has far exceeded their employment numbers at their fulfillment, um, facility. So, um, thank you for supporting this resolution.
Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Anderson, thanks for your, your work on this. Uh, this mirrors, um, what the council endorsed for Under Armour. Um, just doing it in reverse order where Under Armour came, built, and then we, uh, endorsed the conditional loan with our matching funds. Uh, this is very similar, but just as you said, it's just, um, proactive to be as competitive as possible to, uh, help land this, this major company in the seventh district. I appreciate your work on it. And one of the, the, um, uh, the provisions of these, uh, of these loans is that it doesn't become forgivable unless certain conditions are met over time. So there are incentives built in for not only number of employees, um, but if I'm not mistaken, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but also for employee retention goals, um, where the, you know, the, the recipients of these loans can have their loan forgiven if a certain number of employees stay at their job or with, with the company for a certain period of time. Is that correct?
Exactly. And that, so that would be, uh, new jobs at the site, but then also an overall number within the state of Maryland. So there's, there's a few thousand Amazon employees already working in Maryland. And to do a conditional loan like this, you can't just simply shift those people from one location to the other. So the state will set up a, a large number that has to be retained over a set period of time on top of the conditions, the new jobs here, in this case, fifteen hundred jobs. Plus, there's conditions around the size of the facility, the amount of investment that has to be made in terms of improvements, uh, before that conditional loan becomes forgiven or it gets backed down proportionately, which has happened in the past with, with other projects.
And I'm reading from the executive, uh, summary that project cost for an Amazon facility at TradePoint, um, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet at a cost of about two hundred and twenty-five million dollars?
That, that's the estimate we're getting. Again, there's not, there's not a deal that's been done. And we are a little bit ahead of this as opposed to how we did Under Armour or McCormick, for that matter, after we'd already had a, a deal in place. But those are, that's the outline of what we're hearing from the state. Um, and then the state would take their action, um, following us if, if, uh, TradePoint and Amazon can come to terms. Thanks for your, for your help on this. And thanks, um, Councilman Crandall for, um, helping at the job fair. We had a job fair, uh, last week that really points to just where we're at on the, on the east side of town. So with these, think about these fifteen hundred jobs, um, nearly a thousand more with, with Under Armour coming, um, and then what we already have with FedEx and Patient and all the others. and then what we already have with FedEx and Patient and all the others. We had 400, in excess of 400 people cram into East Point Mall last week. So thank you for helping to push, because over 100 of those people were just walk-ins that we hadn't, hadn't pre-registered. But we had folks like Diageo and North American Millwright and Life Bridge. We had 34 different employers on the east side trying to recruit. So it's a new day on the east side. So us putting all of our effort in down at TradePoint, like our permits and inspection crew here in the county have bent over backwards to make sure these projects go forward. And I'd say we're well ahead of schedule down at TradePoint Atlantic because of all the county's activity down there. So thanks for your help in getting us to this point.
Thank you for your comments, Will. Thank you, too.
And Will, I mean, obviously, the distribution center, we know, is different from the headquarters, of course.
That's a little different than that project.
Yeah, but at the same time, I mean, over 225 million investment, if we're able to capture that, it's just huge for TradePoint and huge for the county. And it seems like the headquarters issue, it seems like a lot of the state is coalescing around Port Covington.
Yeah.
But I think in the state of Maryland, do we have two or three other people in the state that are saying they want it too? Like is Montgomery County or Prince George's County?
Yeah, so the way, this is the Amazon HQ2 project, completely different project than the one that we're talking about in this resolution. You know, our project, we think, is very close. The HQ2 project, we think, is much more of a moonshot that many people are chasing. We happen to think that the Baltimore metropolitan area has actually got a very good shot at this, and so too does DC. But the company is only really requesting one submission per metropolitan area. So the county executive asked us to scrub every possible location in the county to see, do we have a winner in this batch? And we really didn't. We met some of the criteria, but we saw we were not going to win. And that Port Covington and the city really represented the best chance for the Baltimore metropolitan region to win. If you look at the comparison of what factors are they looking for, what's ready to go, and if you've been to Seattle to see, well, how does Amazon live today? And they're looking to build that. Again, they have that opportunity at Port Covington, and maybe one or two sites in DC. DC has to sort of figure it out amongst themselves, because they've got Northern Virginia and Prince George's County all competing. But I think what you're going to see is Port Covington be a real surprise candidate, and that this county can help support that coming. And if you just do the numbers, 50,000 jobs averaging $100,000 per job, that's a $5 billion payroll. That is an earth-changing number that happens to help our city, our county, our region, our state, you know, the eastern seaboard if we can win it. So, and it's a super-aggressive schedule. So the state is trying to get everybody behind one, maybe they'll back two sites, I know they're going to back Port Covington, and get a submission in in about, you know, 20 business days. It's kind of crazy schedule, but that's what Amazon wanted to see, is what can people do to get creative around it.
And I think even if it's Port Covington, the spill over to the county, as you said, is tremendous, especially, you know, a lot of those employees are going to be living in southwest Baltimore County.
Exactly.
Employing, you know, driving back and forth and spending a lot of money, and housing stock should do quite well, and the tax base will go up. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a huge win, even if we get it really close by. But I really appreciate your efforts, work with Councilman Crandall on TradePoint for this distribution. So that'd be a big win for us as well.
Yeah, this is a massive win. I know it's overshadowed a little bit by chasing the headquarters, but this would be a massive win if TradePoint and the county and the state can pull it in.
Absolutely. Any other questions, comments for Will? All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming in. Okay, why don't we turn to page 10, and we'll throw it back to Councilman Crandall, Bill 54-17, page 10.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This bill is specific to the Dundalk Commercial Revitalization District. A lot of people know it as the Dundalk Village Shopping Center. We call it Old Dundalk, if you're a native. I think Councilwoman Bevins probably knows this. I've passed around some pictures of what we're trying to handle here. It's an older shopping center with pool-in parking, and we have some very large vans that park in the, in the spots that are intended for the retail customers. And then you can also see in the pictures that there's no visibility from the sidewalk. There's, I mean, it's just, it's just sort of crunching the whole area, making an unsafe situation, and taking away parking from the retailers. So we would prohibit trucks over 3/4 of a ton from parking in this area, and I appreciate my colleagues' support on this.
So I just have a question now seeing the picture. So the Carrying Hands Adult Center is here?
Yes.
And so is there another place for these buses to park?
Yes, there's parking on the backside of the building.
And they're just not parking there?
Correct.
Okay.
That's not being very neighborly.
I wanted to make sure parking was available.
There is, there's a large parking lot behind. Now, I don't think that anyone would have a problem with, you know, dropping off patients at the front door, but these are left there all afternoon, all evening, and causing some, like I said, some safeties and visibility and some other problems.
It's quite a bit of them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And any questions or comments for Councilman Crandall? All righty.
Thank you.
Moving on, let's see. Why don't we go to page 35, Councilwoman Bevins, Resolution 88-17, endorsement of an application.
Yeah, this is just another opportunity to bring new business to my district, specifically to the avenue at White Marsh. This is a, they call it bubble tea beverages, and this just helps with the $189,000 loan to renovate a 633-square-foot retail space. So it's all about bringing new business to the area, and of course, that means jobs. So I'd appreciate your support.
Questions, comments? Easy enough. Let's go to page 12, Councilman Catch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, county law requires that during the CZMP process, that representatives of either the proponents or opponents of a particular zoning issue must register with the county secretary, which is Mr. Pedicore. That is your correct title, right? You're the council secretary. What this bill simply does is it requires that this information be posted on the county website. The purpose of it is this, during the zoning process, one of the most important things that can take place is that the opposing parties work together to try to resolve whatever issues exist between them. And so it would be good to know who the representatives are of the opposing sides. So this would make that information available on the county website during the CZMP process. I had two extra hearings, one at Hereford High and one at Cockeysville Middle School, where I brought people in to hear their testimony on each issue, and then had the, under the circumstance, the proponents and opponents were able to be in the same room and meet one another, which I found to be very helpful. So this would make that process even easier by having available the representatives online of the various parties during this process.
Any questions, comments from the council?
No, I would just like to add, I'd like to be a cosponsor.
Yeah, I'd sign up as well. Makes sense. Anybody else? All righty, last but not least, I think, I think, let's see, page 11, Bill 55-17, air cannons, Councilwoman Bevins.
The genesis of this bill was a community, the Bird River Beach community, specifically Stumps Road, living under circumstances that are almost unbearable. So they came to me and asked about maybe creating legislation to help them. Evidently, now, this isn't new development around a farm. The residents have existed as long as the farm land, and there's a piece of equipment, they call it an air cannon, and it shoots off. You can set the timing of it, how often it would go off, and it's mainly to scare off birds during the day and wildlife, specifically probably deer, in the evenings from eating their crops. The problem with the one specific farmer located off of Ebenezer Road is that the air cannon is set to every three minutes, every three minutes, all day, all night. They have videos of it, they have recordings of it, and if you can imagine living just 20 feet across the road from a farm and listening to that all day and all night. So I'm open to amendments. We're looking at a resolution. I do want everyone to know that we did ask the farmer to come to mediation with the neighbors. They refused. They said it wouldn't do any good. I always believe in trying to mitigate any kind of issue before creating legislation. So we're just looking for a resolution for these residents. This is not similar to, if you already live next to a farm, you don't get to complain about the tractors and the spraying and the dust and the smells. This is different. This is a noise, and what I've been told is the decimals that the air cannon is set at is at between 125 and 135 decimals. 85 decimals is considered safe. So anything over that is almost deafening. And to have this set to every three minutes, I have a letter from Peter and Janet Terry, who live the closest to this farm, who went into great detail of how this has affected their lives and their neighbors' lives. So I think that, are there someone from the Farm Bureau here today? Good, okay. So I'm anxious to hear what any of the folks from the Farm Bureau have to say as well. I'm open to amendments on this, but I have to have some kind of relief for the residents. And of course, I've already, I'm going to put in amendment for 500 feet, within 500 feet of a farm, so that shouldn't affect people that have the farms out in northern Baltimore County. This would just be for communities that back right up to farmland. So I look forward to any further conversation.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you. To add on what my colleague, Councilwoman Bevins, mentioned, I do thank her for introducing this. This is from the Hartford Current, quote, "Propane cannons are the largest, loudest weapons farmers use in their efforts to keep birds from eating their corn, tomatoes, and other crops. One popular model, being advertised on the internet, farm supply sites, promises to deliver a loud thunderclap equivalent to a 37-millimeter cannon, 130 decibels. 130 decibels is equal to a military jet aircraft takeoff from an aircraft carrier with afterburner at 50 feet." And this is just the type of devices that are being marketed on the internet. Now, certainly, not all farmers are going to have these type of devices, but the fact is that right now, my understanding is we have no regulatory mechanisms, even in areas that are near residential communities.
And this amount of noise can be heard from a mile away. So not only does it resonate within a mile, there is the Bird River, and which is less than a mile between Laurel Lee Beach and the Bird River folks. So you can imagine how it travels over water. So we're receiving complaints from the Laurel Lee Beach community as well about the dogs being upset, children not being able to sleep, people losing sleep at night. So I just hope that we can come to a compromise where people can get a little bit of sleep at night, and the farmers can preserve their crops.
Questions or comments, Councilman Catch?
Yeah, first of all, this air cannon is our humane way to get rid of the birds. It's a humane way. When I hear the decibels, do you all realize that to qualify for a sound barrier along the beltway was 55 decibels? 55, and this is what?
125 to 135.
125. Now, representatives from the Farm Bureau are here. I'm so happy you're here. And I'm just hoping that you'll be able to meet with the farmer and try to work out some accommodation, because, I mean, it is not reasonable for someone to set off an air cannon every three minutes, 24 hours a day. I mean, that just isn't reasonable. So when you come, Joanne, I guess you're going to, when you come up, could you please talk about your efforts to reach out and hopefully anything that any of us can do up here? I know it's in Councilwoman Bevins' district, and I'm, I know that she's tried to help, and so please try to work on it. Thank you.
Other, we do have three public speakers, but before we call up the public speakers, any other questions or comments from the council? Everybody good? Okay, so we do have three public speakers signed up for the, you know, public testimony. I'll call your name, and you will have up to three minutes. The clock is up here. And so let's just begin. Of course, you'll speak right at this table up here. Our first speaker is Joanne Chason, followed by Beverly Novatny. Okay, sorry, thank you. Joanne Chason, thank you for coming.
Hi, yes, I'm Joanne Chason, representing Baltimore County Farm Bureau, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. First of all, as Councilman Catch mentioned, this is a non-toxic, non-lethal way to control the birds. One thing we would recommend or suggest if this legislation were to go through is considering moving it to 6:00 a.m. instead of the 7:00 a.m., simply because I did a little research and sunrise actually through the months of June and August is at 5:30 a.m. to 5:45 a.m. And anyone who gets up at the crack of dawn knows that as soon as the sun starts to rise, the birds start moving.
So 6:00 a.m., is that what you're saying?
6:00 a.m., I think, would be more reasonable. The Uris family actually is here, which is the farm that is in question, I believe. And in a conversation I had with them earlier today, they are willing to go through mitigation or mediation. With that in mind, then we would ask that this bill would be withdrawn during that process, or at least tabled during the process of mediation. There are, I did speak with the Maryland Department of Agriculture Ag Conflict Resolution Service, K-Meg in Washington this morning. She actually recommended that maybe we go through, or that the council, the community, and the family go through the county ag reconciliation board, which I believe would be Wally Lippincott would be your contact person there. I reached out to him, but was running out of time today to do so.
Thank you.
Basically, that's all we have. I mean, my biggest concern, I think, is that if we start taking tools out of a toolbox, what do we have to replace it with? That is non-toxic, environmentally friendly. I get that they're loud, but, you know, when we start taking tools away, then sometimes what replaces them is a little less environmentally friendly.
And I understand that. I don't, I think the air cannons are a necessity. I truly do. I just think that running them all night, and we were, my, we were actually told that the farmer said that I let somebody else, they're responsible for turning them off, and they just forget to turn them off. And you can't use that as an excuse. If it's your farmland, your air cannon, you're responsible for turning it off. So I'm just curious, when did the farmer decide to meet with the community? Because as of this morning, he said, no way.
I was just able to speak with his wife this morning, and we had a conversation, I don't know, 10:30 this morning.
Okay, because I was going to say, our conversation was pretty early.
And then we spoke again in the hallway once I met them here today.
All right, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beverly Novatny. Come on, come on, I think I got it right this time. Novatny. Good afternoon, and thank you for coming in.
Terry's are out of town for two weeks.
I want to thank you, and, thank Mr. Uris, too, for being here. I just want to say one thing. Janet and Peter asked me to come here. I have lived there for 12 years. Mr. Uris and his family have been very kind to me. I've never had any argumentative periods of time with them. I do know that my dog is traumatized when the noise is so loud. I have to take her in my car, walk her up by the school three times a day, because that's what I usually do when I'm home. what I usually do when I'm home. So I can't even get her to go outside. So my concern is the loudness of the noise. I understand that they have to have them, you know, and I understand everything else about it, and that part of it is okay with me. It's just the loudness of it. And I did have, remember recently, one of the, the cannons came off, it was right across the street from my house. And the same thing happened to Peter and Janet. I, my first step was I called the police because I wanted it to be amicable, and it was. And Mr. Uris kindly, the next day, moved it, okay? So I personally have no problems with Mr. Uris and the farm, and why he's got to do what he has to do, because that's how he lives. That's his living. He's been there forever. I've been there for 12 years. But my concern is just the loudness of it. And it does, even 6 o'clock in the morning is early for me, because I'm retired, you know? And I kinda like to sleep a little bit in, but, but that's okay. If that's what it has to be, it's what it has to be. But in the evening, you know, when you wanna sit outside, and you wanna eat on your porch, and you wanna do all that, and at 4, 5 o'clock, you know, you, it's hard to do that. It's hard to do that.
Right.
But he has been very, very helpful with me, and I live at 1228 Stumps Road, okay? And how he's handled the other neighbors, I don't know. I have no idea, but that's how I feel about it.
So my question is, you're concerned about the, how loud it is?
Yes.
So I guess my question to the Farm Bureau would be, can you control the loudness of an air cannon? Or is it that specific model, is that loud? Or can you control how loud an air cannon actually is?
I personally have never tested these. I have spoken with people that have used them, and I don't believe it can change the level of, 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 of the model they have. So I don't believe it.
And can I talk to you about their, how frequent they go off?
They're frequent. I mean, I can't say three minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes, 20 minutes. I mean, I really can't, because I don't pay attention to it that much. But, you know, it's frequent, yeah. I mean, it's frequent enough to, to bother me, and, you know, my husband and that type of thing, but, you know, like I said, that was it.
You can finish your sentence.
You can conclude.
Because I interrupted you.
They put a people on me there, see?
That was only 30 decibels, by the way.
Yeah, right.
But, yeah, I mean, that's how I feel about it. It's the loudness of it.
Sure.
And he is right, because he does have a worker that works for him, and he does ask him to do that. But when I see the worker up and down the street, I'll stop him, and I'll go, "Did you turn off the cannons?" He goes, "Oh, I forgot."
Right, because before I introduced this legislation, I spoke to another farmer that leases land in the area, and he said he never uses an air cannon.
No, they don't.
At night.
They do not.
They just, they never do.
Yeah.
So, well, thank you for coming in, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Councilman Catch?
Yeah, Joanne, is there any policy in place, or any recommendations as to how frequently these air cannons are?
My understanding is that air cannons, you have to be changed periodically, because most of the time, it's going to be noises, or even, you know, I know once we've got the water, it's kind of like a, your nation, like water thing, that it was motion sensitive.
Oh, so what's that, every 10?
Because that, as stupid as it is, we say, I, my understanding of that, my name has to be changed periodically, to remain.
But you, you don't know if it should be every four minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes, or?
Yeah, I don't know. The only way I can do that is.
Where does it come from?
Thank, thank you.
Councilman Catch, I have a question for you. You have a lot of farms in your, your district. Is this a fairly common issue up in your district?
I have never gotten a complaint from, from anyone regarding, of course, you've gotta realize that our farms are.
Are not vegetables.
They're spread out, and they're not, I mean, some are next to small communities, but for the, no, I have not ever heard. I, I assume, Joanne, that it's not, they aren't used that often, or what?
Certain times they're used, like what Joan and I spoke to, they had used one in about 30 years, but because of this is a problem, they would have a mission, they just start to use it again. And, and the technology apparently hasn't changed much, because people buy cars for the exact same model that the first two years. In addition to that, the, this is the first time in the state of Maryland that regulations, things are kind of, if anywhere has changed.
And I guess it is a particular crop that might be more attractive to, to, from birds and everything else?
Or is, is the biggest concern for crows, deer, threatened?
Okay. Good, good. Any, I know we have one other speaker. Okay, our, our last speaker for the day is Joan Craze. Joan? Thank you for coming in. Good afternoon.
Hi, members of the council. My name's Joan Craze. I am the daughter of Donald Uris. Today's the first I've heard of this problem, so I haven't had a chance to speak with my father on where his guns are placed, and how often they go off. Generally speaking, the guns are used when the farm product is almost ripe, too ripe, and that's usually within a two-week period. So in this, you know, point A on your map, and then the next crop comes in over at point C, and it, it's all over. So you're talking about 36 acres in this particular area. So probably corn is planted in about five acres at, at a time. So I don't see how the noise could be so obnoxious within that two-week timeframe that the, the neighbors are complaining.
They said that they test, this letter says it's been going all, all, all summer.
In that same area.
Well, I don't know about that area, but they, if it's only 36 acres, the community can hear it, and across the river.
Okay, I guess I need to speak with my dad and his farm manager, and the community, and find out what is exactly going on.
So you're saying that the cannon should only be going off two weeks in the summer? Is that what you're testifying to?
In that particular tract, yes. Yes, I mean, the, the corn is.
The farm itself is, is 36 acres total, right, with all these sections?
Well, there's not just corn there. He plants tomatoes.
Right.
Watermelons, and cantaloupe, strawberries.
Right.
He hasn't done strawberries. We had a problem with the deer overnight, so we haven't had strawberries planted for several years now. But corn, from the time it gets fitted enough for the birds to start paying it any attention to the time that it's harvested, I would say about two weeks. And after it's harvested, he plows it under to keep the birds, you know, keep them moving.
Any other remarks, question, Councilman Catch?
Did you say that when it comes to the strawberries, that it is necessary during the night to fire the cannon? Did you say that?
I, I learned today that at one point, he did have the cannons going in the strawberries.
But this was at night? I mean, is it necessary to do it at night?
That's, that's what I heard, and I have not verified it with him.
Do, do we know if firing at night is necessary?
So firing at night will help with deer?
Like one, one in the morning?
They don't become immune to that noise after time? I read an article where they do.
That's why, that's why they typically recommend the main factors, which we recommend changing the, the cycle of the noise. You know, maybe it's maybe like three minutes now, and every 20 minutes later, that kind of thing. I know these deer being, we have them from, 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 and I drive towards the house, and they'll be 20, like, middle of the night, and I have to be moving late from being 1:00, 10:00, 11:00, 12:00, 13:00, there is, it's 20, 30, year, obviously, on field, which is, we can't, we, that. Sweet corn is even more powerful today, because if they're, 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 the crows is a big problem. So I did just, I'll check, 8:30 PM, it's sunset during most of the summer months, so you know, we'd be changing it from 6:00 AM to 8:30 would be a compromise, just for the crows, but the deer, it's not going to be effective for the deer, because deer typically don't come until they have eaten. I gotta tell, tell outside that.
Right, right. Well, thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, well, I do believe that concludes today's work session. I appreciate everybody coming out, and please have a very safe drive home. Thank you.
But he just said this morning that no way would he do that. I think he was just saying that it'd get us to a job. Right. Yep. Right. He's, he's.